Come to order with the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Good, I have a motion on consent. I make a motion to accept consent for gender as written. Second. All in favor? We'll handle the question of the next board selectmen meeting under other. I personally have no comments. Does anybody else?
Um, anyone?
We're not? Okay, we have public comment. Alrighty, hearing that, we will go to business item number one. Which is the question of target practice and use of firearms. I believe we have someone to speak to that?
Yeah.
You may take that off.
Thank you.
As long as, as long as you don't get too close to run.
I'm not getting too close to my knee. I believe you received that, my wife raised her that at work. It's a point road issue. We've been, our neighbors, six years ago started this gunfire on and off target practice, using automatic pistol fire. And it's been going on basically for six years on and off. And it will die down for two months, a week, and you might get one set of thirty rounds. And then the next night you might get hundred rounds. And it's just, we've ripped out three hundred forty feet or something like that from it. And there's six houses right around this area. So there's nothing we can really do by calling the sheriff's office with this issue. And, I mean, there's horses, there's livestock around it. It's just, I've tried calling the owner multiple times, and he never responds. And I don't think it's any shooting, I think it's one of his kids or something like that who's living there. But it's not a sort of place you can go and sort of knock them to death. They're not bad, so. There's a lot of no trust, lots of science, a big office and all that sort of stuff. And, you know, it's starting to have quite a dramatic impact on my life anyhow. Random gunfire, this was a very disturbing thing. And especially, it's not gonna end. And you think over six years because maybe because I'm masked or something, I could just go away. And, you know, it drops down. I will call Randy Shai, the owner of the point road. And maybe he says something, maybe doesn't, but he never responds like the message. And it seems to die down a little bit. And then slowly, kind of, works its way back up until, you know, sometimes it's every night, seven o'clock at night, or something like that. I think as a general thing, I think all the neighbors are really quite, I don't know how to address the issue. And I don't have any ideas about it because, you know, we're a nation, I think, and they understand.
So, in the, in the initial letter to us, there was a request for an ordinance change of some sort. And so I have asked Carly, who's our top clerk, if she would give us a brief lesson for the camera as much as for the rest of us, how an ordinance change takes place in the town of Westpac.
So ordinance changes have to be presented at the, typically the budget town meeting, which is our spring annual meeting. And they're put to a vote by, obviously, the voting body is anyone that shows up from the town. Typically, those are presented by the planning board, by a selectman. The selectmen as a whole can also ask that it be put on the warrant. It involves multiple public hearings for people to ask questions and make suggestions on it. That basically covers it.
So the, what we've considered for ordinance changes, and I represent the selectmen at the planning board, have already been sent to the attorney for this year, so the timing wise, it's not necessarily doable for this schedule. So you had said something also about three hundred forty feet from your home?
Yeah, three hundred ten feet or whatever it is.
So what, because I just wanna, have you looked at the, the information from the state on?
I believe it's a hundred yards.
From a building?
Um, yes.
Or a residence?
Yes, or a building domesticated.
So is that still within the spectrum of where they're shooting? Are they violating that setback?
No, I don't, I mean, you know, I mean, I'm not telling them that they're shooting. I probably do, kind of load to go there and flip my head over a little bit. I, you know, as you imagine, they have enough land to.
It's not land, it's actually a, a building.
Building.
So if they're shooting within a hundred yards of a building or a residence, it's prohibited?
I don't know.
Close with, with the building you got back, I did a, just kind of quick Google search with the scale. Seems like a three thirty from the lady to the south drives her nuts to another lady. To the north, maybe three fifty, fifty B is three forty. But he has got a building down in there that's probably close enough to, to request this. Now, if you want to go back on it, years ago, when Ellis was Cota of us, he, the same, same problem occurred. And he went down and he told them, he said, "Well, you know, you guys are firing into ledge and everything. Bullet's probably gonna go anyway you want." That kind of been down for a while, but they, they certainly have been having pretty, pretty good lately. I can hear from miles. I can, so I can imagine with the other two neighbors up, up above, Bruce, Jackie, and, and Marina, what's her name?
Beth.
Yeah. I think of it, because they got, they got animals up there too, so must, must be out on the animals. But, like I say, Ellis stopped him for once, but it, it's more or less, it's just three hundred feet that seems to be the problem now. Ideas outside of Diggly stops today, I love to play. He has got a building, boy, that would be so close to two ninety or so. It's uninhabited, but it's.
It doesn't say an inhabited building, it says a building.
Yeah.
Oh, it does?
I would say.
It says, unless relevant municipal ordinance provides otherwise and except is provided in subsections, discharge a firearm, including muzzle loaded firearm, crossbow, projectile that passes as a result of that within a hundred yards of a building or residential dwelling. Is there?
Very close on that one.
Is there any water in that area?
Any wat- water?
Water and lead bullets, in theory, they're gonna issue.
Well, the way they were shooting, come on, Ellis was, they were shooting down into the brook. It's led you down into the brook, that's what he was worried about.
Well, like lead and water, I mean, I know they've tried to prohibit the use of lead ammunition.
Yeah, well, that's protocol.
That's like an issue with the game warden, not to change town ordinance for one individual. Something about the game warden, if you've got an issue with one individual, not change everybody that lives in the towns, you know.
No, I mean, it's something, you know, it's been six years, and I don't really want.
No, it's just.
Right, but I mean, whatever, that doesn't live in your area, so they, you know, change their ordinance too? Because you have a problem with neighbor, I mean, that's kind of a personal matter, maybe.
On a mass, is there any way that we can get the, that you can get the distance from that building? Is the, is there a way that you can have that distance checked? That might.
Don't get me wrong, I haven't really, you know, got a change, but hey, I'm just, it's got to a point where.
You're, you're looking for a solution to what seems to be an endless problem.
Pretty much, and, and to change, and a man's right to change stuff for everybody is not really what I, I, you know.
Have you talked to the game warden or?
Uh, no, I talked to the sheriff, and he was like, "Well, you know, I gotta call you when they're doing it, otherwise they're just gonna deny it."
Has the sheriff gone and talked to him about it?
I think if you spoke to a game warden, they'd take care of your problem.
I don't understand why not.
Because they, that's what they do, they, they, they don't like people off there shooting guns any more than you do. And if they're shooting them on a non-restricted area that's closer to a building, they're gonna make sure it stops. As a sheriff, it's really kind of out of their jurisdiction, they don't really know the rules. But game warden's know all those rules, and they can overrule, you know. Even if it was legal, but they didn't think it was safe, they could make it stop.
I mean, that's all, but, I mean, after six years.
You can take your mask off when you're talking.
No, a lot of times it'll do with, audience, where they have to, they're gonna have a shoot range or something, that's a possibility. I think when I talked to Ellis last time, I talked, and he said he thought that one of the guys coming down there firing is, is a felony. He's not supposed to have a gun in the first place, so.
Even worse, so to get then the, the game warden involved.
Yeah, maybe that's the way to go, Steve.
Which is more to start with that. But also knowing, if you can determine the proximity of that structure.
Yeah.
That may also provide a secondary solution.
Yeah, yeah.
And I suppose at some point, how's it qualified as shooting range if it's not just family members shooting there?
What?
If it's not just family members, is it a shooting range?
Well, I would, you know, I got to a big meeting in life too, it's, it's no problem if somebody wants to shoot a shot up once in a while. You know, to, to, you know, just to slide a gun or something. But this is repeated, repeatedly. I mean, it goes on and on and on with, with handguns. Like I say, it, it's just very alarming, for his neighbors, especially gay, who don't like it. And she's, she's the closest.
Can, can you check with the game warden, as the wisdom of the group suggests? And get the, get your measurement to see if that is any recourse for that particular situation? And perhaps this is something that bears some further discussion, but if, if you can take those steps first, and maybe as that, things develop, if you keep in touch with Christine, she can keep us informed. And there probably is some other kinds of wisdom that can be brought to bear before we have to see whether or not the town wanted to change the ordinance.
Yeah, I think, I think the ordinance thing was just suggested, was he told me such, and anything else, you know. A high impact for everybody for a local problem. Which, you know, nobody really wants to go through all that work. So, you say it's a hundred yards?
It's a hundred yards, on your way out, you may take this. It's a hundred yards from a building or a residence.
Thank you very much for your conversation.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to take the winter roads contract off the table? Or?
We tabled it last time, and now we haven't tabled it.
To take it off the table.
Oh, bring it back on, oh, I thought you were just putting it up.
No, I'm not, I'm putting it back. I moved that we take it off the table.
Second. All in favor? Okay, it is off the table. Do you, you don't wanna say you didn't?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Steve, what have you learned, if anything?
Well, quite, quite a bit. We actually gained some progress. Doctor Vista Hill and I talked with Goodall both. What seems to be most of their concern, what drove what their price so high, is that the ten percent of the salt mixture was the same. Which was high, it's higher than what the state standards are and stuff. But I've talked to them, and I, I explained to them, they, their numbers were way up. But I did manage, the Goodall did drop his price. Let's see. Eighty-one hundred a mile.
A mile, Steve?
A mile. And it was, because they were, they were really high. So what, basically what it was, let me just get my notes here.
How many miles do we have?
Twenty-seven. So he was actually, if he dropped his price down eighty-one, eight thousand one hundred dollars per mile, it would save the town forty thousand dollars.
Over the three years?
Yes. Because he was two twenty, two hundred and twenty-four thousand the first year, two hundred and thirty-one thousand the second year, two hundred and thirty-eight for the third year, which comes down six ninety-six fifty-eight. So if he went to, so if he goes eighty-one a mile, that's two hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred a year. And he said he'd keep it all the same for the three years. So I'd say that's forty thousand dollars a year. It's actually seven hundred and twenty. So that puts him actually at six fifty-six. But then, my discussion with Hill, and he also dropped his bid lower. He went down, um, he went down fifty-five thousand dollars a year, pre-year, cheaper.
Fifty-five thousand?
Yep. So he was at, the first year was, um.
What was his, the miles to leave?
The what?
Did he ever?
Yeah, I'm gonna read that to you right now. The first year was eight thousand six hundred and fifty per mile. The second year was eight thousand nine hundred and ten per mile. And the third year was nine thousand one hundred and seventy-seven.
What was the first year again?
Eight thousand six hundred and fifty. So that puts his bid down to seven hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy, which his original bid was at seven hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-three. So if we're gonna take it one step further, that we can even save more money. He said he would go down to six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars per mile, if the town won't sand and salt again. So, in that savings, it would be fifty, would be saving fifty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars per year. So that comes to a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars that we, that would be saving. And would probably spend probably ninety thousand dollars on sand and salt.
Per year, over the three years?
Over the three years. So that's our biggest savings. I know we're kind of sketchy, if I'm scared about the town buying the sand and salt. But it just, it got abused, and it wasn't used right. It wasn't used the way that we planned it. And that's thirty thousand dollars a year for town buying the sand, if we need to replace filling again. Like, right now, we have, I think, about six hundred yards up there and ninety tons of salt, sitting in the building right now.
And what was your estimate for three years of salt and sand, for us?
Ninety.
Ninety, so thirty a year?
So, over a three-year period, if we went with that figure, he went sixty-six fifty for the first year, sixty-eight fifty for the second year, and seven thousand fifty for the third year. For that three-year period, it came to five hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Plus ninety for us.
And eight, right, and eight hundred and fifty, plus ninety for us. And his original bid was seven hundred and twenty-one thousand. I personally opinion that we should take a gamble and buy the sand and salt again. This is, this is a reason. But the simple thing is, we need to supply the sand and salt to the town, and we need to move it down to the town hall, or somewhere. So, if we own that sand, nobody's gonna say, "Wait, you owe us this to fill that box and this and that." We'll put it, you know, we'll have, we'll own that sand, like we have.
Yeah.
And I think we can save that extra, I mean, we're looking at saving sixty thousand dollars by buying the sand and salt in that town. These guys are scared, and they're throwing their figures up there so high, because they don't know what's gonna happen down there. They don't know. They got the sand, you know, sand and salt went out of sight, sand went out of sight, and they couldn't get it. My recommendation is just try another three years buying the salt and sand.
How much is in the salt sitting out there, Steve?
We have, I'd think it's right around, between seven, fifty and seventy ton of salt.
And what would we normally buy, salt?
I, I, I didn't make that.
Yeah, we spent seven thousand dollars on salt this past season.
And we have.
We spent how much, seventy?
Seven thousand.
Okay, so we got a big chunk there.
Reason we have that there is because the first two years I was told not to micromanage. And they did whatever they want with the salt. And we took a beat.
Okay, what's, what's the sand situation there?
Our sand situation, we're sitting on about six to seven hundred yards. And we need to put in about eighteen hundred yards this year.
So we got a third, we got a third of it there.
Right. It worked this last year with a little bit of micromanaging, letting these guys know that they had paid attention to what they were doing. And they still put up way over two bucks sand, and we all agree on that.
I guess we have a common idea that the first two years of the past contract didn't mishell out half the town anyhow, right?
Yeah. He did, and I talked to Glenn right extensive, and told him that issues with him, and he says he, he thinks he's got a mine out and stuff. He did drop his price, he got his, did try to work with us. His stuff is still in the, in the sand shed.
I hear him till the fifteen.
Okay, and, but, at the bottom line is, is, he, they're back to the, the sixty-six fifty is the same exact price at Pittsburgh if hiring guys to do their mouths per mile. At Pittsburgh buys over the sand. So we're going from sixty-six fifty all the way up to almost ten thousand by having these guys buy the sand and they're scared. They don't know what kind of, where are they gonna get?
Right.
So they're not figuring it, they're figuring, okay, three thousand yards a year. Where some years you might use fifteen hundred yards and that. And that's where the town can find himself saving money. Where they already give us a big break of saving us, you know, around fifty thousand dollars a year, we can take that gamble buying the sand. But it's totally up, up to.
I have a question, is that, is that significantly redefining the bid?
Yes, in the bid tag, as the original tag, there was, there was sand in it. I am trying to make now, they, both contractors was out of our budget.
Yeah.
For them buying the sand. I mean, there, there were three thousand dollars more a mile. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to look, talk to both of them, and try to figure out how we can do this and get it out. I mean, without buying the sand, they saved us forty, they dropped their bids, both of them around forty thousand a piece for them. And they're still gonna buy the sand. But I think we can save that much more, and they feel better about it, if we want.
Well, I, I think it puts the, it allows them to budget into what they need to do, and allows us to budget that, and then we pay the consumable.
And all of that, they don't have to come up with a ton of money, put all that sand and salt in that building before the season.
Well, it's our consumable, so in theory, if we eat, consume, it's, it's, we can have a flat fee, give or take, on a foul.
What does this mean?
Needs a new bill.
Well, the board has the authority to negotiate the contract any way you wish. So we wouldn't be doing anything improper by awarding a contract that was significantly different than.
Well, we only, these are the only two bids we had, and we're going, we're changing, given the opportunity.
Yeah, and Steve spoke with both of the contractors, so I'm comfortable.
I met with both, I sat down, I talked with significant to both. The only advantage that I can see would be between Ben and, and Jamie, is Jamie's in the town. Quicker response, and more people to help him out. Ben, Ben just told me that he thinks he got his stuff all, all together, and he can do it now. And that's great, but if we can have, make sure that their contractor has it greater, and they use it, is gonna save the town on the salt. And not only that, if these guys get to buy the sand and salt, it might tend to be a little skippy, and we don't want skippy either.
So would you amend the contract prior to?
Yes, prior to anybody signing it, it would be amended to meet whatever you approve.
So, I'm at a risk for us paying for our consumable as a town. I mean, it's our risk, we may not have to put a lot on. We may, I mean, I think there's, I think it's easier for us in today's economy.
Right.
To have a fixed cost and know what.
And, and your contractor knows, okay, then this, all they gotta do is supply a truck, a million insurance, and go out there. Well, when they start thinking they're gonna, you know, supply the salt, the sand, you know, it's, it's, so they're jacking their price up to protect themselves. Right.
So, I don't often admit my mistakes in public, but I'm going to. I think I made a mistake two years ago, three years ago, when we awarded this first contract. I, twice, because we tabled that first one, too, I twice made a motion that we award the contract to the low bidder. And then we have had, you and I have had a number of discussions about the appropriate way to take care of those. And I think we could still have that discussion, but I think that I was mistaken about the recommendation, just simply on the basis of this was the low bidder. There, it has, I have learned a thing or two, that there, there is a difference between performance and performance. I, I think what we need to do is, is think more about what, what is the value that we're getting for the money that we're spending. And I don't think there's, even in this economy, you don't script on safety and performance. That, that's how I'm feeling about it. If I had that, if I had that argument to make all over again, I would not necessarily simply say, "This is the low bidder, so this is how we should go."
What was Goodall's price per mile without sand?
Eighty-one. Oh, without sand?
Without sand.
We didn't, we didn't get into that. This was, I talked with, uh, Dr. Goodall this morning, and told him that, that his bid was too high. And this is what I was looking at as a road commissioner, and trying to save the town, is to get this down to eighty-one hundred a mile, because they're all up over twenty-nine and, ten dollars a mile. And, so we discussed if, if he could do the eighty-one, and we didn't mention the sand. So then, when I went and talked to Jamie, Jamie brought up, well, I would really prefer if you guys bought the sand, and I would even drop it down this much more.
So would it be appropriate for having?
Yes, it would, definitely, bring it up and see what.
Well, I mean, try and reach him out and see what his fee would be, so that we could close this.
I would want to put him on the spot like that.
I think we, we just, we need just maybe a couple more weeks and, and work out the balance, I don't think.
If the town, if the town's gonna buy the sand and salt.
That would make sense.
We can stop that process.
Right.
Soon.
Right. Now, we can go back to him and say, "Okay, we, this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna supply the sand and salt." What can you do about it?
So would it be fair to ask what we submit, not a bid based on them not having by the sand and salt? And just tell them to do their best bid, and then on this review, though?
I don't know if we want to go out to a bid request.
No, just those two, because those would be the two.
Those were the two figures.
So.
But even, even asking for another bid, does that violate anything that we're doing?
Well, I, I wouldn't really call it.
It would be a formal bid, it would be.
Yeah, I hear what Kathy's saying, it wouldn't really be a bid.
I would just submit an updated proposal, or an updated, I mean, it's, I wouldn't call it a bid.
Because I think you need something in writing.
Right, and I think if we, just let me keep doing the negotiating and go back to them and say, okay, I'm pretty sure that they're slightly don't wanna go with buying the sand and salt, what, you're gonna do it for this price? And I'll give you the two prices.
Yeah, bring back the best.
I'll be, yeah, but I think we definitely should give Glenn a chance to bid that.
And would we, what measures could we take to alleviate the concern about excessive use of sand and salt?
Well, you have a road commissioner, and yes, I think he, your road commissioner knows enough, he should be able to micromanage it.
If micromanaging is needed?
He sets his job up with it.
That's where we went wrong before, we just give them free reins.
So where, where are you moving the sand and salt for that? Is it that, is that coming to town hall? Is that the proposed?
The public sand.
Yes, the biggest reason is for that, there's a liability up there. And I didn't agree with it getting moved back up the, the sand shed because the simple reason is during a snowstorm, you have trucks going in and, and loading. People are trying to squeeze between them, go get to that sand and stuff. So we open ourselves up for liability there. So now if we just go down and we fill it before a snowstorm, down at the town hall, nobody's, you know, we're going, and they can go down there and take it. From there, and it could be.
Point of that, Steve, is they're taking a bucket, not a bucket loader phone.
It's, right. Well, we need, it's a bucket for storm per resident, per resident, that's it.
Yeah, there's no way to monitor that up there.
Right, it's two buckets?
It's two buckets, isn't it?
Yeah, well, even if it's two buckets, you're gonna have these people who back up with the pickup trucks.
What it needs to be is a bucket, a five gallon bucket for a resident. We'll put a camera, an official camera, a game camera, whatever we need to do to ensure that.
Yeah, it needs to be in the outback of the town hall, not in front of the town hall. They make a mess, you got some people who takes and throws the trash in it. It's gonna be outback where our town minister can look out there or, or the second, you know.
But if it needs, it's not a weekend, we need.
Well, she should be here.
Yeah. My only concern is if it's outback, we need to lock the dumpster because people are gonna see that.
No, I'd rather have it out front, actually.
If we put it on the far end of the parking lot so that it's not.
And it really is an insurance issue, we don't want anybody milling around the sand shed, we just don't.
Or getting hit by a truck.
Yeah, there's so much liability that goes along with that.
But we do remember we had a lot of sand thefts.
We had a lot of sand thefts, so what, how do we?
You put a camera out there.
Legitimately, put a camera out there that works, that we can run.
Well, if we get something that you only spend a bucket in there to fill it, and then they have to carry it all the way all around the fence to get to the vehicle. If you just can back right up to it, shovel it in, and then it's had the monitor.
Well, if you put an opening that's big enough for a shovel.
That's right, you can reach in there, scoop and shovel and bill a bucket.
And that's all you can reach in?
Right. And then have to carry that bucket thirty yards to the vehicle, you're not gonna be taking a whole.
Well, and if it's up front, people will also see someone's back in a truck versus down back.
The problem is is that they're doing this after hours.
But even, even someone who's on the road.
Didn't happen.
But they're still, they'll just tell you to go.
Yeah. Well, if somebody's dishonest, they're gonna be dishonest, you don't wanna change it.
If you have just a hole, then when it gets down, it's gonna be hard to reach, and a lot of the people that need the sand are elderly, so that's a huge problem.
Would it be too much of a hassle if you have several days of no storms or no ice to lock it up?
Oh, yeah, it can have a lock on it.
And essentially, we were only building it before storms, right, that helped.
I, my folks are paying the business.
If you have a melting and freezing, that's a storm, I mean, it's not as.
Set it time scheduled per day, if you want sand from the town who's back, you'll be there between this hour and now.
Oh, during business hours.
This hour is over.
Yep.
Brilliant, brilliant, why didn't we think of that before?
This is why you have a road commissioner, right here.
Give that man a gold star.
Gosh, not this year.
Man is amazing.
There's no raising this year. That's, that's good.
Give that man a free bucket of sand.
So is the sense of the board at this point that we send Steve back to do some negotiation?
So, yeah, before we, yes, but I want to ask one more question. So you mentioned about ordering the sand, is time of the essence to do that?
We don't even have the price yet.
Not yet, but we, we don't wanna wait till September.
They want, they want us to make sure we get some dry sand.
And so the time that should be when ballpark?
Whenever we get the price from.
So from now until, I mean, we should start, okay.
I said, like Kathy mentioned, like to have the sand up by the end of July.
Yeah.
And then that gives plenty of time to go. Not give them until November to get it in, and that's our way to salt.
The only reason is if you take this weather that we've gotten.
You say that now.
Light weights. We would have what's in the neighborhood.
Or you get inside the shelter, it can dry.
Well, I hope we're gonna have some good weather, but I'm not gonna bang on it everything now.
I gotta go.
So we're gonna ask you if you would continue your negotiation. We are going to table this in just a moment. And then after we do the initial plan, we'll come back and set a meeting for us to come together again to make a decision. Your negotiation with both would be on the basis that the town would again assume the responsibility for choosing the sand and salt.
Yes.
And the road commissioner would maintain the responsibility of overseeing the application. So we could have those negotiated proposals in writing?
Yes, oh, definitely, actually, he'll give me one in writing if you'd like to see it. I didn't get one from Ben, but.
He's a little more official than us.
We can make another bid.
I get that, but we like it official.
I know that, I'm just saying.
Oh, I, I think that shows a, a good face.
Those are attached, they just showed you his figures from what he dropped from the.
Well, I wrote, I wrote everything down in your sand, so.
You were quick, I think. I tried to do them all for a couple years, so I did.
I got it.
But I just wanna say, we appreciate you doing this, and this is the way, in my opinion, we should be doing business. We shouldn't just take the bids, we should be negotiating. It's, it's working, it's.
Well, I was kinda scared when I saw the figures come in and I, I couldn't figure, put, figure how they're coming up with these figures. And I needed to talk to them and see why, and basically, bottom line, they're both scared of buying the material and that's.
Am I remembering anywhere close to correctly that Hill's bid three years ago would have been for sixty-one hundred and change per mile? So this bid is not unreasonable considering injuries and pressures?
His bid is right on the money of what Pittsburgh is. I went down, I got the numbers from Curtis Doby, he does a few miles down there. So I calculated his, and here's actually how I came up with the hundred and eighty-one thousand, I mean, sorry, that was not what I said. How I came up with the eight thousand, one hundred dollars per mile? Is I took Curtis's price, he said he does it for sixty-six per mile. So I added in the sand and salt, and I calculated it all out. And he actually come to a hundred and seventy-nine thousand if he was gonna do it for the town who's back. So therefore, I said, well, we'll throw a couple extra, and if I get the guy down there, we're saving the town sixty thousand dollars right there. And then, I, you know, then I gotta figure out what we paid for the sand and salt, it's like, still on.
Yeah. I appreciate your work, this is good, thank you.
I am gonna be tough on the guys to make sure they do have the proper equipment. Because if you don't have the proper equipment, they use our salt as crutch.
Lesson learned. Okay, so can I have a motion to table this until the?
No, you just unbid it.
We're gonna retable. I make a motion that we retable the housing contract. I second it. On paper, tabling, all right. Okay. And very dear, I admit it on name of state, in public.
It picks, it picks a little bit up there.
Initial plan for reopening?
Yes.
Tell us more.
We would like to open June first, we think that's a reasonable date, it's a Monday. Get off to a fresh start, waiting on the public, we miss the public.
Must be awfully quiet.
Well, it's just weird, the phone rings off the hook.
Yes, there's no, no quiet.
We will take all of the recommended precautions that we can, that the CDC suggests or requires. I have talked to a contractor about putting up a flexi safeguard at the counter, which should be pretty simple and straightforward. Gloves wiping the counters down, wiping down the doors, masks. We can't require that people wear masks when they come in, but it will be suggested.
Do we wanna have some time set aside for folks that are at higher risk, perhaps, maybe the first couple hours?
If anybody calls and asks for an appointment, Carly and Julie will definitely make accommodations. That should be pretty simple in a town our size.
Yeah, and I'd even go maybe a step further to offer that and, and tell them that they can call.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think, I think as we publicize that we are reopening on June first, if we add in that we, that appointments are available and accommodations can be made, I think that will go a long way to reassuring people that things will be safe.
Absolutely.
And we will still be going ahead with the election on June fourteenth?
The election has been moved to July fourteenth.
July fourteenth, yes, so to the day before the proposed town meeting.
Town meeting, correct.
Is, how many line, is that still on the table for July?
Yeah.
It is.
I'm, I'm a little concerned about that because my reading of that says that the limit is fifty.
That's true.
And if perchance we had a large town meeting, we would be over, and that would mean that we would have, we can't exclude people.
You have almost ten people, what you went with, with the town officials, you have over ten people, can you hold it outside?
Hey, I, I'm not opposed to calling it outside.
Yeah, I don't know, it could be awkward.
Not unless we rent a tent, a really big tent.
I don't think you would.
See, initially, I was under the impression, perhaps a false impression, that we were going to hold this to just the necessary budgetary items that would take us through the next year. It seems like there are other issues that might be raised, so.
And I thought we were gonna try to get a bigger venue.
Yes, and I'll definitely follow up on that, but still, we're supposed to meet the fifty threshold.
So we can't, I would say July is doubtful.
Well, June is fifty.
And July is fifty.
July is fifty.
Unless something changes.
August is a hundred, I believe.
August is a hundred?
I believe it is.
I haven't seen a hundred people at our town meetings in the last ten years.
We had a hundred and fifty last year.
Yeah, I've seen fifty, yes.
If we have, if there is concern about any of the ordinance changes that are being proposed, we could very well get a hundred people.
The only ordinance change that we have right now is a setback.
Anytime you do anything with regard to land use or zoning, people are gonna come out of the woodwork.
And in fact, you've got over ten people, just town officials, with a school board.
Right, yeah. So as everything these days, you make one plan with, with a backup plan. So we can go to August if we need to.
Yeah, I have no objection to that.
And we assume we, we run on this year's current budget as much as we have to during July.
I, yeah, that, I think that's consistent with the governor's order, that if we, if we are not having a town meeting when we normally would, then we go with last year's budget.
Until January twenty-one.
I, I'm not so sure I'm wanting to do that.
You've got a town meeting, do anything, you can't, you can't stay away from a town meeting.
If we're gonna hold it by June first, you have to move forward with it.
By month to month, I mean.
Or July first, I'm sorry, by the end of the.
You do have a town meeting.
Now I'm not sure, I'd have to look it up.
I think we need to get clarification on that.
Yeah.
Because there's certain things that we may not have the funding to support in all of the warrants.
The, the past numbers are, what I heard was if you have no town meeting, you can operate on the current, which is nineteen-twenty budget until January twenty-one.
Dave, what does that do to the fire truck?
Well, the fire truck has agreed to last year to have the selectmen buy it.
Yeah, where are you coming from?
So you can do that from surplus on, on those funds, more than selectmen can do that.
We would have to have a town meeting vote, but we could take all of it from surplus.
Based on last year's warrant, I hope.
Right, it was authorized last year.
How come we can't have like a voting ballot right now?
Because we.
Technically, we can, but it would be a whole other process that Carly would need to.
Well, would you have to have an ordinance to change that anyway?
I'm not sure, that's something we would need to look, look at the statute. There's a lot of legal requirements that go along with that.
Without making a change.
So before we change anything officially, why don't we look at the ordinances? Kathy was looking at a larger facility that could hold, and let's clarify what?
Same, we can't go above fifty.
Well, let's, let's clarify, let's, before we decide tonight, let's decide what's the.
The, the rule from, the last, the last governor's rule said, meet no more than fifty people at a gathering. We're canceling our family reunion.
There's been a lot of things canceled.
Yeah.
And, and say for sure, we can't plan for the less than fifty people in town meeting happening in July.
You just can't?
Unless you're gonna hold the number at the door, which I don't necessarily recommend.
If we went, I'm just asking, but if we, so what would we do come January?
Don't know. We have, hopefully have a budget, someplace we can have a town meeting between now and then.
If we hold a town meeting after July, but before the end of the year, can we then go to that budget at that time?
That's the way I understand it, you'd go with your new budget.
It depends when you commit taxes too. We can only commit taxes once.
If we hold a meeting in August, and we have, and, and, when, when do we commit to all of those items that are on a warrant?
At town meeting, you commit to them at the town meetings.
So we're not committing to any expenditures that aren't on the warrant? Or then, how do we, how, if there's things that we are trying to reduce costs on, how do you maneuver that?
You get it on the town meeting.
You cannot reduce anything or spend anything, the board can, without the town agreeing with those numbers. You can't take a, a road account and decide to cut it. If a town voted on a hundred thousand dollars or whatever, you can't cut it unless the town allows you to cut it at the town meeting.
So are you talking about like Sabino or something like that?
Sabino's different because we've, we've awarded the bid.
That's encumbered as well.
We've awarded the bid on that at the town bid.
And that was.
And we can't just cut salaries or anything else because the town voted on those, at least in the last year's numbers.
So that we also can't increase.
No, you can't do a thing, only what the towns voted on.
So, so the proposed raises for the school are frozen?
If we have to go, we understand it, if we have to go to the last, this current budget year, we can't increase those numbers until the town.
I wouldn't wanna sleep for Emily though, excuse me, David, because she has contractual obligations too.
That's, that may be committed.
You know, it would take her input to figure out what she's obligated to do.
Because the town did sign the contract, you're right.
And, and she, there's lots of things in a school budget that she doesn't have any, any choice about, so. We may be waiting for direction on the governor for that.
Right, is it appropriate for us to go back and ask all the people that put requests in to sharpen their pencils right now? Planning for a new budget meeting that perhaps based upon drop in revenues, we could look at? Is that something we want to do?
I think anybody has a budget in this town, if you're looking to see a way to cut, maybe they should cut.
But should we, should we make that official? My point is should we make, because all of the people came in with their warrants to your meetings. Is it appropriate for us to go back out and say, hey, based upon what's happening, we need you to sharpen your pencil everywhere you can?
The budget advisory committee is planning to meet in early July, is it?
Well, it all depends now.
Yeah.
Because we may be looking at the earliest, a August town meeting.
Right. So, and the budget advisory committee advises, we ultimately are the body that decides what to put on the warrant. Um, I don't, I haven't seen too many people coming to us asking for things that are luxury items. We, we run on a bare bones most of the time.
Well, there's some things that may be reduced.
Probably doing financially, do you know, or?
We're doing fine, the detail or the summary of our expenses and revenues is in your packet.
Has it been a lot different from last year, or what do you see?
I, I mean, it is, you'll see a marked difference in excise. But if we open on June first and people come in and register their vehicles by July, by June thirtieth, I think you're going to see most of those excise taxes coming in.
I got about five thousand dollars left of the, the should be registered here.
Well, I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm not trying to be facetious or mean, but yet. Everybody's getting the extra unemployment and stuff, they aren't being able to register the vehicles, but she's still saying, perfect, they don't have to, right?
Right.
Um, until June fifteenth at this point.
Which is still before the end of August the year.
Yeah.
How is that general assistance?
Um, from what I can tell so far, it hasn't increased very much.
It has increased though.
It has increased, but it's not.
From nothing.
Right, and remember, we still get a reimbursement from the state for half of our expenditures, it's not.
It's in the line.
Yeah, it's not going to be a huge hit.
And will any of this be reimbursed by the feds under the COVID, this general assistance?
I don't believe so. I haven't heard it's not anyway.
Because there, there's a lot of things they're reimbursing that you wouldn't think, I don't know, that they would touch, but they are.
So I think the town budget, we've all got to, uh, find ways to cut.
Well, that is, I get, this is my first go right at it, so I'm trying to understand, you know, what's the process to ask people to reconfigure their requests?
I don't think we've ever been in a situation like this.
And, and we don't have any charter or ordinance or policy that says that you can't do that. So there's nothing, you can create your own rules if you wanted to, this body, the Board of Selecting could decide.
I just think it's appropriate for people to.
If you wanted to do something like that.
To look at what they could live without for a year.
In theory, I suppose if the board didn't want to give agency A a thousand dollars, you'd just not put on the warrant.
And just because they want to last year's warrant, you don't have to hand that out to them first. That's what I'm trying to figure out, if there's things that we'd like to remove off of the warrant.
Well, you gotta be careful, I think.
An agency, you know. I, I, I think as we are cautious about the money that we spend, we also should be cautious about the money that we cut.
Exactly.
So, um, I think.
I think you should be cautious about the future, what's going to be spent, because you don't know what's going to happen.
That's why I think we need to maybe pause some of the things, I mean, I, I, we don't know what we don't know yet. And so I, I, I don't necessarily want to say, oh, we'll just do last year and just, just run with it.
Nobody knows.
So I think we need to be very conscious on items that are not, I mean, we, before COVID, we saw a doubling of the West Bath used at the Blue Pantry. I have to presume that that's more than doubled again with COVID. So we need to figure out, you know, what, where we need to perhaps put more money in one area and less in another to support the residents of the town.
And I think that you should probably also be aware that one area where we're going to take a hit with revenue is on our state revenues.
Right.
Um, because of the decrease in fuel taxes being collected, um, we are going to see our local road assistance decrease. I think to the point where we can't even budget for it.
And how much?
Or we're going to see our main revenue sharing decrease. We're going to see our home state reimbursements decrease.
We're going to see school aid decrease.
School aid, so there are a number of areas in our state revenues. That's the area that I think that you want to have real numbers on.
Anyway, so, so in that regard, there's other things that we perhaps, by point, need to pull back on before we make commitments so that we can balance what we have. And we, you know, so we need to look at those commitments. That's, I'm concerned that, that we are not going to get the revenues that we're projecting, whether it's from our excise tax or assistance from the state.
Well, we're going to work around now, I think. If we have no town meeting till August, September, whatever, we still have to have a budget to pay the bills. And I believe the state of Maine has said, in the meantime, use the current budget going into the next year.
But does that make a commitment to the warrant, or is that just use what we have?
I think it allows us to pay the bills.
To pay the bills?
That's what it's designed for, just, you know, before you commit taxes, before you're able to hold a viable town meeting, it gives you the authority to spend, you know, part of what was appropriated in the previous year.
That's my point, is that not everything maybe should be appropriated on last year's warrant.
Well, it would, it wouldn't be formally appropriated.
We can't do anything on, we cannot change the budget until after we have a town meeting.
Understood, but we need to, I, but I don't, I, I.
If it's two months into the new fiscal year before we have, hold a town meeting, then essentially it would be two months of what we spent in the previous year's budget.
But we're not making annual commitments or anything, correct, or contracts that are annually?
Correct.
You're not, you're not paying some bills?
We're just paying the mandatory bills to keep the town running.
I would think.
We signed that. Right, when we sign the warrant, they're saying that the bills are going to be paid.
Right, but there's certain things that are not in there that are coming due on annual commitments.
Yeah, the agencies won't be paid or anything.
That's why, that's what I'm asking, because that's, in my mind, you're saying we're committing to a budget from earlier, then we're committing to all of those requests that came in.
No, no, just until the town meeting.
You're committing to be able, to be able to pay the bills.
Understood, I just want to make sure that we're not committing to other things that are coming through.
No, it's more utilities, payroll.
I got it.
Cost to doing business type stuff.
So how long have schools been held?
March fifteenth, I think, eighteen?
So why are we paying, uh, we, you still got kids that are getting breakfast and lunch there?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, they're getting fed, for sure.
They're delivering them to their houses, I think, at this point, some are picking up at the school. I think March sixteenth.
So, and salaries and all that kind of stuff.
I also look at that.
Homework assignments and those type of costs.
But I also saw that we paid fifty, two hundred dollars for a cleaning service for the school.
It's probably contractual.
It's contract.
Okay.
It's a, it's a signed contract.
Yep. I mean, they're staying, it's, it's, um.
Unfortunately, it's.
Well, we're good, I mean, at this point in time, it's.
Yeah, but there, I mean, just look at these, these fees that are just.
Yep, yep. We sign contracts, and, you know, this is blind side of everybody, so.
So what would happen if we didn't have the money to pay them?
We'd have to get a bond.
Take a note.
Which is why it's so important that we pay our bills on time, so that our bond rating remains good from the state. On deposit notes, people are registering vehicles online in droves, so that is helpful. People discovering the beauty and convenience of online registration.
Will the state still give us the money?
Yeah, people are getting tired, being locked in, they don't stop soon.
Well, since we have another outbreak, then what do we do?
What are we paying for?
Well, at least Santa Fe has opened up and we are in one of the counties that has very few cases, so.
Right next to Cumberland.
But I don't know how they can do that without.
But it's, it's Cumberland and there's Cumberland.
They haven't even had, haven't even passed the same one. It's like, how do you do that?
So we've got to be, uh, a little flexible, shall we say? And how we approach everything.
They're going to have to be a lot flexible is what it is, because we don't know any of the things that we normally expect to know.
So Christine, could you, for our next meeting, pull together the items that are the month, the revenues that we receive that are at risk?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and I, I think our, the next meeting, we should probably focus on finances if we have.
And just understand what we have, what we're paying.
I think that would be really helpful.
And for that time, the state may have a better idea of what they're going to be cutting.
Yeah.
Because I, I just think we need to.
I mean, at this point, like I said, I don't think we can even anticipate revenues for roads. I think we'll be receiving so little.
Ballpark estimate? Do you know what you got from the state for the roads off the top of your head?
From the state? State aid. Yeah, because it used to be only nine thousand dollars, I had no idea what this is now.
Okay, so when shall we meet again?
I don't believe it was March.
There's a calendar on the back here, binder, Madeline.
Yeah.
I thought it was good recap.
And remember Memorial Days in there.
Yes, that is, that is a tricky thing.
We'll all be, it's a party.
Yeah.
We'll be at the beach having a barbecue. Is the twenty-fifth the official day?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, that would be our normal day to meet. What I'm wondering is, um, Steve, would, you think you might be able to come up with some further negotiation, uh, next week?
Yep.
Could we meet the week of the eighteenth, but not on the eighteenth?
Obviously, we got a motion tomorrow. I want to keep it rolling, I'm fresh top of everybody's head, so.
I'm still home.
Why not do it on the eighteenth?
Because I have another commitment.
Yeah, and that's not a lot of time to put, solve the numbers together either. How about the twenty-first?
That would work for me. Thursday, Thursday.
That's the only funny second line.
Would the twenty-first work for you?
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay, so you will declare that the next meeting will be the twenty-first, and that gives you plenty of time to work with your guys. Um, at five-thirty, here in the fire hall. So Carly, could you put that on the calendar for the town?
Of course.
Thank you. Uh, is there any other other?
Another question for, for the town office. Uh, we had discussions about computers that are getting twelve years old.
Yeah.
Not working properly. Uh, how are they doing? Are they surviving, I mean?
You were awesome.
Carly routinely gets frustrated. I think Carly's the most frustrated.
I don't think we have Christine mention that there might be some money.
There is some.
There is some money contingency.
Because we're kind of up in the morning is an issue. I think the largest issue is our figure in that holding June meetings and if we have to work remotely, we're certainly not at capacity for that.
We want to upgrade to Windows. We want to upgrade to Windows three sixty-five as well.
We're surviving, we're not thriving, but we are surviving.
Are there, uh, machines breaking down or just slow?
Well, there's one that, at our point of sale, that every morning has to go through a virus jacket.
Oh.
You know, the old touchscreen reboot, so it's time.
Yes.
But don't we have a, a laptop or two leftover from, where are those? We have one, uh, it's not set up with the server or anything. But don't, isn't that something that we could elevate to, um, how old is that laptop? Um, it's a few years old, it's not really set up for day-to-day operations, but, so I don't know the cost that it's upgrading versus just getting a new system. But we should at least set one laptop up for remote use if we need it, if it's not being used right now. Oh, absolutely, one hundred percent, that's a great idea. Where is that computer? It's in house, it's in the office. Yeah, it's the computer that everyone would need so much instead of work remotely with elections.
It's just time to move away from Windows seven.
Yeah.
And start really looking at how everything is connected within the office. It's not ideal. Um, we need to take a big picture approach to what we have in the town office and look at our long-term needs and come up with a good plan. Can we make it another year? Yes, we can make it another year.
Well, that might be something we choose to do, right? I mean, I just, I, we just don't know what the money is, and I, I'm not a fan of spending what we don't absolutely have to spend right now.
Next year we will have to.
You know, and that could be a completely different story.
Yeah.
And if we find out that there's money, and, I mean, there's, who knows, we just don't know.
Right.
You know, and I don't think we should make any commitments until we absolutely have to, unless it's a fire drill today.
Could you and Julie find out what would be possibly available out of this year's budget?
Yes.
If we, if we needed to do something?
Mm-hmm.
Just so that we could hold that if we have a major crash.
And is there somewhere to get a estimate of the cost?
Yeah, and I've already been thinking with John Buckoff, which is why we've been talking about what would be appropriate for a town office our size.
Yeah.
Um, talked about Windows three sixty-five, we already have the .gov domain name reserved. Um, been taking maybe steps forward.
I think if you could get us the cost and get us what might be available.
Right.
If this crashes, we're, we may see nothing.
We're looking at six hundred dollars per computer is what we're looking at, and there's.
Including all of the new office?
Uh, let's see, yes, I believe so. I'll double check with them. Um, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and the server.
Wow, one, two, seven, the seven.
Counter.
I have a question that I have those two. Uh, on my current budget that I have for the group, do I keep working, do, do I keep spending money from what I normally do to July, from last year's budget, or what are we doing now?
Will you?
I have a question actually about that too.
You, how much do you, how much on paper would you have left?
I'm not sure exactly, do that Christine?
The money you have left over, you would definitely carry over. That's, that's road money, so it would carry forward.
Only goes to roads.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask you a loaded question that you may not like. Um, what are your thoughts of, we upped your, um, non-approval to ten thousand dollars from five? Would you be opposed to dropping back down to something lower than that in the meantime?
I'm quite understanding the question.
So you, you didn't, we, we gave you, um, you didn't need approval for anything up to five thousand dollars. We brought that up to ten. In today's times, would you consider going back down to five in the meantime?
I don't see where you're going to gain anything, because I didn't, I mean.
Because we don't, we just don't know what we have.
I understand that, but ten thousand dollars is no money to spend on.
I, it's not that you can't spend it, it's just a, it's not, it just becomes a discussion point.
It does come a discussion point, but meanwhile, it just puts a, a project back further.
Wasn't, wasn't the discussion that you did approval from the chair of the town president?
No, I think, I think we just, and I, I, just based upon where we're at, we don't know what we have, and I, I, I think we should, yeah, temporarily.
I understand, I'm, I'm. I can understand that, I'm, I'm curious about this, but from what we have to do now, we've already got plans and stuff to... For the...
The up, the increase was the road commissioner in consultation with either, either and/or the town, the town administrator or the chair of the board of selectmen, so that...
I'm just not comfortable, we, we went from five to 10, and in today's times, I'd like to come back to five.
He's back, he's back to five, he's not, he's not going to spend more than five without consulting.
I don't think that's what it was set up.
Yeah, it was, that's what the motion was. So that, he's, he's not...
He's got to check with, with Christine anyway to make sure the money's there.
Right.
Exactly, I mean, I can ask you about that.
I'm going to, I'm going to be, go out on a limb here and suggest that Steve is not spending any money on roads that he doesn't have to spend because he's that kind of a guy.
I'm not saying that he wasn't going to spend, I'm just saying that he was given car, I don't say car wash, the ability to not get approval for up to 10.
He was given...
I didn't get that.
He did not get that, he got the, he got the ability to make a decision in, if he needed to, to spend more than that without coming to the full board with, in consultation with the town administrator or the chair of the board of selectmen, that was the, that was the motion, and that was the way that, that was, and I, I can't...
I guess, basically, if I see a job that needs to be done, I'll, I'll see if we got the money and do it. $5,000 job, I don't know what you think we can do out there for $5,000.
I'm not saying you can't do a $5,000 job, I'm just saying, I thought it, it was my understanding that you didn't have to ask for approval to 10.
He doesn't, he doesn't have to ask for $5,000. He does, beyond five, he needs to check with Christine or with whoever is the chair.
He just has to wait for more to...
He doesn't have to wait for a month. If, if whatever happens happens tomorrow, he wouldn't have to wait for money.
And right now, he's operating on the current budget until July 1?
Well, that's what I'm asking, but July 1, we don't, we're not going to have a town meeting until August or whatever.
So you want to know what's happening July 1st and August?
I don't want to burn up all my last year's money at July 1 and then have no money to deal with.
You would, you would...
I don't know, I, I'm asking how that works.
You would have money.
Roads can be overspent.
Because, A, because roads can be overspent, and because if we are not able to have a town meeting at the end of this fiscal year, then the governor's ruling, as we went into the emergency, was that the town could operate flat funding, so you would have money.
Okay, well, basically, what it is, is that we give, I gave you guys a list last year, we all spent so much on this real network, but we didn't get it done last year, and I was going to fill it in the spring to get these jobs done. And I want to make sure it's still okay to spend that money from last year's budget.
It is, and from what I can tell, you have about 150,000 left. I'm not sure how much of that may have been committed, and I'll double check with Julie to make sure that's correct. But you have a fair amount left.
You may need to, we'd look as we're going forward, what your priorities have changed.
Oh, exactly, and that's what I'm saying now, but, I mean, there's certain places that, like Rockweaver said, I want to get these ditches fixed, I want to get the road built back up, and that was in that budget collection, I just want to make sure it's still okay to spend that money. Because I've been approved with the segment that we could do that.
Yep, and it was approved, that, that was approved.
But I'm just double checking to make sure that we don't just...
You know, it's been rumored that it's costing less to do road work right now, is that accurate?
No.
Well, I mean, the...
The only thing that's cheap right now is the gas.
Well, and the labor, they weren't doing overtime, they weren't doing, I mean, what else has changed?
I don't know.
Well, Steve never did overtime.
The state roads aren't, they're, I mean, they're, they're able to get stuff done more cheaply right now because they're not...
Less traffic?
Yep.
Well, I don't see where they're getting, doing our road out here, they're cheaper.
No, I was just going to say, if that was any other construction company, and I don't care who they were, Hill, Reno, Hennessy, and they left it that way on the weekend, and everybody would be bitching. But because it's the state and they leave it in the net, mess.
Yep.
It's okay. Because that is a mess.
Now, they're not even going to read the timeline because of the light poles, and it's like, that's still in your contract. You're supposed to order that stuff ahead of time, and, you know.
Well, I don't think they're making it, the place is making it, it's not making it.
The...
Right.
Yep.
And they, they were already, they were already warning us in the creep meeting that, that the arms were going to be probably backboarded, so.
You get what you pay for.
And right now, all this work you see is going on, it's already been awarded, long time ago, before this even hit. So like, well, all the work you see down in that, that's just, that's just stuff that's already, you're gonna, you're not going to see this big change until probably the end of the summer and all that, or it's going to affect, and I think you're going to see it's going to go up a lot. That's why I think it's smart, the whole other money that what we can and spend.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm a fantasyian.
I just wanted to make sure it was okay to spend.
Yeah.
I didn't want to have a broke account, have an emergency come up in July, and have you guys not look at me like, what you do?
Your phone would be, and Julie would be on the other end.
Okay, do we have any other other, other, other? I, I just want to say openly at this meeting, if you haven't had a chance to go on YouTube and see the West Bath School dedication, you really should do that, that's why the students at West Bath School, and it's appreciating, saying thank you to the necessary workers, and I think the school did a great job, and kudos to the West Bath School teachers. And so many of the kids were just so creative in the way that they said thank you.
You've got to see it.
You've got to see it.
Oh, yeah, yes.
It's, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing, and it's, and it, and really, for those of us who don't have kids in the school, who don't see what happens with school very often, this is like gold. It is wonderful, and the, the spirit of the kids is terrific, and thanks to those teachers, and thanks to Emily Thompson, who's holding it all together and keeping people moving.
I've never heard anything but good from people at the school or West Bath.
Yep. And thanks to the kids, because they didn't have to do it, it was, they did it on their own time, it was a project, and so those kids all need to be rewarded and thanked too.
Good point.
All right, well, I'll see you all on 22nd.
Okay.
21st.
21st, it's a fuck Thursday.
He's warning us, I gotta tell him.
Let's see, that would be May 21st, 5:30, right here. He's warning us ahead of time, Adam, we're not going to be here. Oh, you better, go get him.
He's not far away.
Motion to adjourn?
I think motion to adjourn.
All right, I'll give her stand-up leave, and we need Stevie's hideaway address, so we have to...
I'm going to blame everything.